Sit right here.
I mean, I immediately walked to it. It was like, okay.
Call the City of Belton Planning Commission session to order. This is Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. Could we have the roll call, please?
Chairman McPherson.
Here.
Mayor Larky.
Here.
Councilmember Pryon. Commissioner Christensen. Commissioner Crete. Commissioner McDonough.
Here.
Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Shutt.
Here.
Commissioner Walton.
And the councilman is joining us online and having some technical difficulties, so hopefully he will. We have seen his face, but.
I'm gonna get his voice here in a second.
Heard his voice. We just, he cannot hear us. So we're trying to work all that out.
Get his voice here in a second. I'm gonna do that.
All right. The first item that we have on our agenda this evening would be the review and approval, so moved for the April 28th Planning Commission meeting. The notes have been printed and distributed to everyone.
Hello? All right, we're using your video and your voice on the phone.
Phone? How are we gonna do that?
Because we can hear you, and you can hear us. All right.
Hold on, I logged down. I was gonna log back in.
All right. Motion to approve Plan Commission meeting minutes, April 28th, 2025.
All right, we do have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion, a second. Are there any corrections, additions, amendments that need to be made?
I'll give it a worse now.
Seeing none, all those in favor of the approval of minutes from the April 28th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
I'm sorry, councilman, I didn't give you a chance. I forget there's a delay.
That was an aye. There's always gonna be like a five-second delay.
I'll try to remember that. All right, next item that we have on our agenda this evening for new business is the DEV 25-001. It's an amendment request, and a request from Valvoline LLC to approve an amendment to the previously approved final development plan for exterior signage for Valvoline at 241 North Cedar Street.
Yep, thank you, Chairman. Before you this evening is the Final Development Plan Amendment for Valvoline at 241 North Cedar Street. The Planning Commission approved the final development plan on April 1st this year, and since then, they have submitted their building permits. Those are currently in review for this site. As they were finalizing their building supplemental package, they did want to request on the, this would be the north-facing facade, or the left facade. It currently does not have a wall sign on there. All three, the other facades do have signs, which meets the sign code. There is a restriction on three wall signs per tenant space, so the original package met that requirement. However, they have requested a fourth wall sign, so they have one on each wall of the building. That is an eligible request under our alternative development standards in the UDC. There are six criteria that need to be reviewed to agree to that, based on staff's review of that, and the revised elevations are in the packet here. And it would be this wall here, where they're proposing that. So same, essentially the same sign on all four facades. Staff recommends approval based on the fact that it's a relatively small sign, and unlike a lot of commercial development, pad sites are visible from all four sides. They're not typically backing up to an alley, or an area where it's just for deliveries, or something that needs to be screened from residential. So staff recommends approval because we think it's appropriate for a pad site at this location.
Any questions or comments?
I'd make a motion to approve the DEV 25-001 amendment request as presented.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any final comments or questions? Seeing none, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Pryon.
Aye.
Mayor Larky.
Yes.
Shutt.
Aye.
McDonough.
Aye.
Chairman McPherson.
Aye.
Ruggles.
Aye.
That does conclude the business that we had for this evening's session. We do have items under a work session, and we have the city attorney here, and I'm not sure if you're doing the whole presentation, or if it's a combination with you and Matt.
I'll be handling it primarily, and then I'll turn it over for Matt for certain Belton-specific topics, and if there's any questions on those.
Appreciate you coming. We do have some new, and I wish our other couple of members were here as well, because they had expressed interest in hearing.
Well, luckily, Matt has a copy of these slides, and he can provide it to them.
Yeah, and it's recorded, so after the meeting, we'll send out the slides as well, and then anybody who wasn't in attendance can go back and watch the video as well.
Good. Turn it over to.
So I apologize, but I am late for a meeting, so I'm gonna bow out as well, and I will promise to watch the recording, because I'm always enthralled by our city attorney.
Yeah, we can talk about it on Thursday, too.
There's always that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, I'll just kind of jump in. I think the next slide is very Matt-specific, but the purpose of tonight's presentation is kind of to provide everybody with an overview of the roles of city staff, the Planning Commission, and the City Council, to provide some background on what exactly zoning is, types of zoning decisions, the weight or deference that a court gives certain zoning decisions. And then the final one, which I think is the most relevant for you all, is kind of the creation of the record. Because as most people know, the Planning Commission is a recommending body, and when it comes to administrative approvals that we'll discuss later, the Planning Commission's ability to develop a sufficient record is key if any challenge, if any decisions of, final decisions of the City Council are challenged on some of those administrative actions. So this is the very Matt-specific slide, but this is your guys' development process, and it is, the City of Belton has a very in-depth process that it puts, and guidelines for how to go through the process that it puts on its website. It is honestly one of the cities I work with. I'm not just the city attorney for the City of Belton. Do this work for a lot of cities across the state. It is one of the ones that honestly provides developers and property owners with a, such a good, clear picture of what needs to happen in the process between, here's our development, and then final approval, than anybody else that I work with. And Matt can kind of briefly talk about this.
Yeah, and there's a hyperlink on here as well in the slides that'll take you right to that guidebook. We do have it on our community development webpage. So this was created about three years ago. Our city planner, Jennifer Hernandez, put this together shortly after she started. And it, it just has the complete outline. We get a lot of, a lot of questions of, well, what is the process to develop in the city? And so there's nine steps on there. You know, really, the, the items that Planning Commission and Council review, are reviewing are really just those first four steps, and then the last five steps are really all administrative through staff. So pre-application meeting is how we always start the process, by meeting with the developer. They submit an application. We have the public meeting, which is the Planning Commission and City Council, and then if plating is required, that's a City Council approval as well. And then we go through the infrastructure work, the permitting, construction, inspections, and then opening. So each one of these has its own list of requirements, and we've, we've received a lot of positive feedback from having this available. So it's something that we do share with, with applicants and developers that approach us for developing in the city. Do you want me to keep going on some of these items?
Yeah, you can talk about specifically, so again, there's three, and I'll turn it back over to Matt to talk about city staff's process, but there are three main players on the city side when it comes to planning and zoning. The first is city staff, the second is the Planning Commission, and then the third is the City Council. And Matt can talk about exactly what city staff here in Belton does, even before something might get to the Planning Commission and the City Council.
Yeah, so this kind of builds off of the last slide. So we are the first point of contact typically for any development inquiries in the city. Occasionally, those may come through the Economic Development Department or the City Manager's Office, but for the most part, it's community development that receives those inquiries. We have pre-applications, or as we also refer to them as DRCs, or Development Review Committee. So that's essentially the team of staff that's here tonight. So we, we have building, fire, planning, and engineering involved with that. So we're all providing what the process is, what codes each of us review, to make sure that we're streamlining the development process. So they're not just talking to one department, they're talking to all the departments that they will be involved with. That way, it's, everything's clear up front of what is required and what the expectations are. Once they go back and make a formal application, it is community development staff that accept those applications. They route those out for review to the other departments. Revisions are made as necessary. We handle all the public noticing requirements for the newspaper, posting the sign, and sending out notification letters to property owners within a certain distance. And there will be some more information on that later in the presentation. And then we bring that before Planning Commission. Planning Commission makes a recommendation on most items, which go to City Council. And there are a few items that Planning Commission just reviews and has final say. One of those was the final development plan, for example, for the Valvoline that you just voted on this evening. And then we also, the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Mary, our one audience member, is the chair of the Board of Zoning Adjustment. And they, they only review variants, requests for variances, and appeal of administrative decisions. Ultimately, we're making our professional recommendations based on the comprehensive plan, the Unified Development Code, and the merits of the proposal that has been submitted to us. One thing I try to stress is, especially when we have larger projects, is typically, we have been working on those projects for many months. So what you're seeing is kind of the final output of multiple rounds of revisions and efforts to make the plan better, and bring the best possible plan forward for the community. And then, of course, we conduct additional research, which could mean, you know, when we have controversial, controversial projects, or new projects that are new to the city, new land uses, designs, we typically do additional research to figure out, well, what are other cities doing? That way, we're prepared to respond to those questions when they are asked of us. And then community engagement. We've done a lot of community engagement over the last couple of years with the comprehensive plan. We'll be starting that soon with the Unified Development Code. But we've also, really, most of the residential projects that have come before the, the Commission and the Council in recent years have all gone through neighborhood meetings, and that's when we invite property owners within a certain distance. Typically, we always do at least 300 feet. We have, send them a personal invite for them to attend to, visit with the developer, visit with staff about what their concerns are and how we can make that project better.
And I'll actually stress just one thing. From my experience, and this is mainly for the new members, everybody knows that, like, you guys have lives outside of the Planning Commission, right? So if it's a big, thick, huge packet with a ton of plans and a ton of design stuff on it, nobody's expecting that you have gone through every single document with a fine-tooth comb. The one thing I will say is that Matt and his staff and everybody up here, the staff report that is included with stuff, Belton has some of the best and most thorough staff reports of any city that I work with. A lot of the times, you can look at them and you can tell that they're just kind of filling the blank, sort of just copying and pasting from the last one with very little. There is actually a lot of really good analysis in the staff reports that you all get. So obviously, I would say if there's, you know, something kind of bigger, or, you know, some that you just, you don't have the full time to read through 120-page packet, just going to the staff reports, honestly, and reading those will give you all of the information that you'll need when it comes to your consideration of the, of the request. And then the next entity is the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission is a administrative recommending body. The main purpose of the Planning Commission, especially when we start talking about some of our approvals tonight, is the Planning Commission holds the public hearings. So for a rezoning, for a special use permit, there are required public hearings that have to occur where the applicant and those that are in support or in opposition to the project have the opportunity to come and speak and be heard. In the City of Belton, that public hearing only happens here. And then the record that is created at that public hearing is included when it goes up to the City Council, if it is something that the City Council is going to act on. So the main driving thing is that the Planning Commission is holding the public hearings and making those recommendations, because when you look at some of these sorts of projects, and you look at a City Council agenda, the City Council is not just doing planning. The City Council has budgetary concerns, it has police and fire concerns, it has general administration concerns, it has all these other things. So the City Council does not have the time, unless we all wanted to have six-hour City Council meetings, which I don't think anybody wants, does not have the time to really dig into each and every one of these planning things that the Planning Commission has. So what the role of the Planning Commission is, is that those public hearings is almost act as the City Council's kind of experts on these things to provide that recommendation up to the City Council, so that the City Council can give that recommendation weight, can look at the record, and be able to quickly and easily kind of figure out, okay, this is what needs to happen on this. There are some items that the Planning Commission does have final approval authority on. Matt and I actually talked about those today. One of them, you've just done, and you guys will probably not do it again as members of the Planning Commission, and that is approval of the Comprehensive Plan. Missouri law, Chapter 89, which is where all of the zoning statutes are, provides that the Planning Commission is the entity that makes and adopts the Comprehensive Plan for the city. The City of Belton, like most cities, the City Council did recognize and endorse the Planning Commission's adopted Comprehensive Plan, but that step is not necessary. The Planning Commission is the sole body in charge of actual approval of the Comprehensive Plan. And then, what, what do we say, lot splits, and then final development plans for developments that are not requesting a rezoning, or, or not more than five acres?
Yes, and I believe here's the, the table here as well in the presentation.
So for those three things, there is no recommendation up to Council. It is, the Planning Commission approves it, it is, it is approved. And then go back up to the City Council. So after the Planning Commission makes its recommendations on things like special use permits, rezonings, final development plans in some circumstances, that goes up to the City Council. The City Council is not holding an additional public hearing. Sometimes you will see maybe property owners that are not supportive of the project. They will maybe get on the agenda to speak. You might have the applicant still there, and staff will still obviously provide the City Council with a report, just like they provided you all. But that, there is no additional public hearing. They are not taking additional input, especially on administrative decisions, from other people at that time. The acceptance of public improvements and easements and rights of way, that is a plating issue, and we'll deal with plaits later on. A lot of people kind of get confused about what a plat is. You guys aren't one of those cities, but that is another role. Sale of city property, development incentives, we're not gonna really talk about those, but those sometimes do play a role in land use, because whenever the city is going to be providing incentives, the city has an additional carrot to make the development even better. You know, when somebody comes in and requests incentives, it's not just a rubber stamp. They come in, they request incentives, Matt looks at the project, Economic Development Staff looks at the project, City Manager looks at the project, and it's like, hey, you know, I know that our rules say X on, you know, facades need to be of this much, this quality. You're getting incentives, let's go ahead and bump that up a little bit. But that's not a Planning Commission-specific role, that's on the City Council. And then direction to city staff on code changes. Under your guys' code, a text amendment can only be offered by City Council, Planning Commission, and.
And staff, yeah.
And staff. So when it comes to a zoning, a map amendment, a rezoning, when somebody says, hey, I want to change my property from residential to commercial, they can suggest that. And they can file an application for it, and it'll go through the process. What a property owner cannot do, and no citizen in the City of Belton can do, is say, I want to change the code. I want to change what the actual requirements are of the code. That is only City Council, Planning Commission, and staff. And when you look at zoning, just kind of from a, from a hierarchy perspective, there are two things that you need, or there's three. There's the comp plan, you guys did that. Then there's the zoning map, which the zoning map says what everything is owned, what zoning district it's in, C1, C2, that sort of stuff. And then the UDC is what actually says what that means. What does C1 mean? What is allowed in C1? What is allowed subject to conditions? What conditions need to be met? What are, all these other things? And then, again, the City Council does participate in community engagement. I'm sure you guys have heard about some, what is it, Ward 4 meetings are very popular, and you'll see them, you'll also see, you will never see a quorum of the Council at one of your meetings. I will make sure of that. So, but you will maybe see a couple of them in the audience when something directly affects them. The final entity involved is the Board of Zoning Adjustment. The Board of Zoning Adjustment is a body that their sole role is decisions on variances. A variant differs from a rezoning, or a land, or other sorts of land use approvals, because it's not something that's provided for by the code. It's instead asking that the code requirements be varied or not applied due to unnecessary or undue hardship on the property. Those go to the BZA, those don't then go up to the City Council, that's just the BZA. The BZA decision is subject to review by the Circuit Court. In some very odd situations, I've actually seen City Councils challenge their own BZA's decision because they didn't agree with it. That's not typically what you see. Typically, you see instead, maybe somebody that's aggrieved by a, the non-grant of a variance, taking it up to the Circuit Court, but their decisions are final, subject only to that judicial review. And then here is kind of all your guys' s, all the different things that can occur. And we're gonna break these down into kind of how they're viewed by courts, but this is all of them right here. The, this is straight from Chapter 89, 010, and then also the UDC. But the purposes of our land use are to promote the public health, safety, and general, general welfare. At the end of the day, the bedrock of what we're doing is that. Next, it implements the Comprehensive Plan. Comprehensive plans are required by state law. They are important. They are not a zoning document. They are a guide to the development. You will see a lot of stuff about, in the, Chapter 89, about, you need to follow the comp plan, you need to follow the comp plan. The courts have interpreted that a little bit differently than what you would think the common law, or the common use of follow the Comprehensive Plan is. They have said that it is not a zoning document on which we can solely and only base decisions off of. It can be utilized as something as part of those decisions, but it is not something that can by itself control. It is instead a guide for what the city wants itself to become, what the Planning Commission wants the city to become eventually. But it's not like the map, the zoning map. The zoning map, that is what you can do with your property. The future land use map is more, here's what we think and hope these properties develop into, and if somebody asks for a rezoning that's different than that, maybe we do say, hey, that, it's not in line with the comp plan, so I don't really like that, but also I don't like it because of these other reasons. So it is, it is our vision board of what we want the city to become. Preserve and perhan, preserve and enhance property values with compatibility of uses. The compatibility of uses is a bedrock principle for when we are doing a rezoning or a special use permit. The entire purpose of land use, as is said next, is, it's an alternative to the nuisance process, is because pre the Comprehensive Zoning Act, and the Zoning Enabling Act passed by the United States Congress in the 20s, the only land use controls were if your neighbor, or if somebody was doing something you didn't like, you had to take them to court and say what they were doing was a nuisance. That was obviously incredibly expensive. There were quite a few rules about that. The number one was you could not move to a nuisance. So if the property or the use was established prior to you getting there and establishing your use, you could not even challenge it. So you could end up with a, a factory in an area that was developing as residential, and there was nothing anybody could do about it. And again, we're gonna continue following on with our police powers from Chapter 89, but 89-040 talks about why we adopt the Comprehensive Plan, and that's for the common good, meaning traffic, public safety, density, historic preservation, adequate infrastructure, suitability and appropriateness of land uses near each other, and then property values. Obviously, when you'll see a lot of plans come in front of you, if it's a new use that is more intensive, and public works gets involved, that typically means that there'll be like a traffic report, or a traffic study included, that will show, hey, here's how the traffic flow is, stuff like that. But since you guys have done a comp plan recently, no offense, you're probably not gonna do another one while you guys are on the, those are done every, you know, 10-ish, 15-ish years.
Probably not, 30, like last time.
Or, yeah, or like last time, 30 years in between. When a rezoning, we say zoning and rezoning, there's not a lot of zoning that goes on, because everything's already zoned. We're more talking about rezoning. I'm gonna use those kind of interchangeably. But the, these are some of the main factors that you will see courts rely on if it's ever challenged. But it's the adjacent land uses, AKA compatibility. You know, mainly, if you think about it, Apple Valley is there. Would we let somebody tear down a house in the middle of Apple Valley and rezone a lot there to put a gas station in? That's probably not compatible in the middle of Apple Valley. Uh, extent to which the property value is diminished under current zoning, this is this is a consideration that every property owner or developer will mainly bring up to you. So let's say that the city had a random lot on fifty-eight highway, just one lot that was still zoned R one for some reason. And a developer came in and was like, nobody's gonna buy a house on fifty-eight highway. Like, there's no way I, I could ever do anything with this property. It's ba- the property's basically worth zero because of this zoning. And they come in and ask for it to be rezoned C one or commercial. That's given credit and thought because without that zoning change, the city has essentially done a taking under the Fifth Amendment. Because if we all know that that existing zoning is not something that can actually occur right there, then that property can never be put to use by the property owner. And the city has not compensated them for that, so that would be a taking under the Fifth Amendment. So that's kind of why that consideration is given. And then the gain to the public versus the hardship imposed on the owner. These three are commonly referred to as the public interest considerations. You'll hear people say public interest a lot, and they think it means the neighboring property owners. It does not mean the neighboring property owners. It means these three criteria. Um, but then the relative gain to the public versus the hardship imposed. So when we think about that, that's a consideration where what is everybody going to get out of this development? Is this development something that is going to provide the city with more residents to buy more things, to use more utilities? Is this going to provide the school district with more students? Maybe the students that they all want and stuff like that versus what happens to the property owner if we don't do this? Does it mean by not approving this rezoning that the property owner can't do anything? No, because honestly, you don't have any R one lots on fifty-eight. But it's more, if you don't approve it, is the next use down that it can be put to? Not a total taking, but essentially making it so that the property owner could do something, but the cost of doing something would be extraordinary. And now we're gonna get into kind of what, what our categories are. Um, the first one is our actual zoning, um, and that's our types of zoning districts. C one, C two, all of those, those are what are the base zoning districts. Next, and a land use tool that has become, the next two are land use tools that have become significantly more prevalent since the nineties. Because not everything works everywhere. Right? That's the general purpose behind these next two, but the first is an overlay district, overlay zoning. What that is, is the base zoning district is there still. But then there is an overlay zone that sits over it, that I think in the case of Old Town just applies additional conditions.
Just applies additional exceptions, um, because of the smaller lots, so zero setbacks, those types of things to help maintain the main street.
And then the North Scott overlay, as it was previously written, was more of the true, true overlay where it sat there until somebody did something that triggered it. And then since it was overlaid, it then came down. Um, those are kinda the two types of overlays and you guys happen to have both. The next is PUD, Planned Unit Development Zoning. This is coupled with the base district. The purpose for PUDs, and you'll see, notice that they're all kind of larger scale uh, residential developments, is because once you start digging into a lot of maybe the plating requirements, maybe some of the setback requirements, those might work on a street or two. But when you're doing a massive, you know, five hundred homes, it doesn't work. Because there's so many lots and so many things that could be done maybe slightly better that we don't wanna say that you can do everywhere, but maybe here it makes sense. And PUDs are really when Matt and his staff are the most involved. Because what you see a lot in PUDs is changes to setbacks. Maybe a PUD R one, instead of what's your guys' thirty feet, twenty-five feet, front yard setback?
Thirty feet.
Maybe instead of thirty feet, because the way the property sits, it makes sense more to have it twenty-five feet because that means that they can get an extra street in. Which we want more housing, some more single-family housing, sounds great. W- we can do that. Maybe it's a a slight change to, I think one of the ones, one of my partners lives in it, there was a PUD and I would never suggest doing this, but one of the purposes of the PUD was, uh, the developer didn't wanna put in sidewalks. So there's no sidewalks, but they made the road bigger and made it no parking, so that then people could walk on the asphalt road. This is Lee Summit in nineteen ninety-one, so they were just kinda going hog wild and crazy out there, but, but that was the purpose of that PUD. And Matt has put some of the PUDs that you all have approved recently. I do believe the, the view, that PUD was specifically a lot size. PUD.
Correct, that was treated somewhat of an, an extension of Old Town in the design.
Because if you look, th- the lot changes are the most common one that I think everybody kinda sees with PUDs. Um, and so the view, I think what they could have gotten without the PUD and rezoning, they could have gotten ten? And then with it, they got eleven?
Yeah, there were twelve, twelve lots, um, but because of the setbacks, the, the two corner lots could not meet the requirements. So they had to come in and, and re-subdivide those, so they were more equally distributed across the block.
Uh, and then the next one is the preliminary development plan. Like the overlay and PUD, this is something that acts as an additional land use control that sits on top of the base zoning. Under the UDC, the most common time that a preliminary development plan is utilized or is required is when it is a rezoning and development of property that is greater than five acres. So basically what a preliminary development plan does and the benefit that it provides the city is not only does that property now have the R one or whatever base zoning and all of its regulations on it, then the PUD comes on top and adds another additional set of rules and regulations on it. And so if a developer were to have up that preliminary development plan and then try and do stuff substantially different than it, the city could enforce and make them comply with the preliminary and then the eventual final development plan that they would have approved. So, one of, I litigated this right when I first got started. It was out in Lone Jack, Missouri for Jackson County Auction. And they had a development plan on their property that showed the, how the buildings were laid out. That's kinda the most common thing that preliminary development plans do. They show you the orderly layout of the buildings on the property. They never even came close to complying with that and basically kept utilizing the property as almost a junkyard. So, under their base zoning, the city had, they, they could have kept doing what they were doing. So the city had no teeth. But because there was a preliminary and final development plan approved on that property that showed how everything was supposed to occur on that property in the orderly design of the buildings, the city had the authority to, we eventually even ended up going to the Jackson County Circuit Court and had the Jackson County Circuit Court in, in uh, put in place a mandatory injunction requiring them to do that and do that only. So those are our kind of main zoning and next we'll get into how we get there, but zoning is, requires due process. And due process has two elements, notice and an opportunity to be heard. Our notice requirements come from chapter eighty-nine. Uh, they require a fifteen-day published notice and then the mailed notice to the property owners within a hundred and eighty-five feet is not directly required by state law. But the reason why it is done is, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, is uh, protest petitions. So you send out the notice to people within a hundred and eighty-five feet, so you know who can come in with a protest petition. Um, the city goes significantly above and beyond just that published and mailed notice. The city posts signs on the property, posts notice here and on the community development webpage, hold neighborhood meetings. Uh, we actually, I think we've expanded the neighborhood meeting and the neighborhood notice a couple times.
Yeah, and anytime, even though we put three hundred feet on there, um, if we think it's going to go beyond that, we have notified an entire subdivision before. And we will likely do that in the future for, for projects in the future.
And so again, all, all yet, all, all the city had to do at most was technically put notice in the paper. That's all, could, could have stopped there, but instead, these are all the additional steps to make sure that the citizens and the property owners know, here's what's going on so that they can come to the public hearing. So, public hearings are required for not only zoning, like rezoning and zoning, but also for special use permits. Do you guys in vacations?
Vacations and preliminary development plans, but the preliminary development plan is usually with the rezoning as one hearing.
But so, the public hearing, state law doesn't say who the public hearing has to be in front of it, just says you have to have a public hearing. Uh, there was a case more versus City of Parkville that says you don't need to have two, you only need to have one. Cause there are still some cities that do two, where there will be a public hearing at the planning commission and then another public hearing at the city council. That adds so much extra stuff on staff in the council that there's, I never, i- if I go into a city that does both, one of my first suggestions as a city attorney is like, let's, let's get rid of this additional public hearing. Because everybody's already come and spoke, now all we're getting is just the same stuff again. But we already have a record of the first one, so now we're just take, wasting everybody's time. Your public hearing process follows the public hearing process that most cities do. And it's first, Matt or his staff will provide a presentation to the planning commission. Then the applicant will have the opportunity to give a presentation, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. Then the quote more public part of the public hearing begins where people, uh, in favor and against are given the opportunity to actually say why they're for or against. Uh, then the commission can kinda have that back and forth discussion. I always suggest more of that back and forth discussion with the applicant and staff. Uh, property owners are more, the public hearing purpose is to give them the opportunity to say their piece. And do you guys, what, what is your time limit for, do you have a time limit for your public hearings?
I think we, we state five, but typically we don't actually count down on that unless somebody's just been going for a, a much longer period of time.
Because what you sometimes, and I've seen it happen, is if you don't, if you start doing Q and A with the property owners extensively at a, you know, one of the meetings where this building is packed, they're ne- one, never gonna happen within five minutes. And then this meeting goes from an hour, maybe two hours to an, I, I've had planning commissions have to continue public hearings because it was midnight and everybody wanted to go home. So, five minutes, let them say their piece, take in what they're saying, think about what they're saying. And then honestly, the, if they're opposed, the best thing to do is to bring up their concerns in a Q and A with the applicant and staff. If somebody comes up and says, hey, I think this project is, shouldn't happen because it's gonna cost too much traffic. Heard duly noted. Alright, now we're done with that purch- portion. Uh, staff and applicant, was there a traffic study done? Yes, there was. Okay, what did the traffic study say? Okay, traffic study said that there's not an increase of traffic here that would require any additional improvements and it's all suitable? Okay, thank you very much. Move on from there, cause a lot of the times property owners have all the good intentions, but maybe don't have all of the background necessary to, for some of those specific technical things have the answer. Uh, and then our final thing about the public hearing is the protest petition. Just noted this earlier about the hundred and eighty-five feet. But so if more than thirty percent of the property owners within a hundred and eighty-five feet file a protest petition, it doesn't necessarily change what you guys are doing, it changes when it goes up to council. And it increases council's approval from a simple majority to two-thirds. It used to be, it wasn't two-thirds, I forget. They just recently changed this and it was really funny when they did because I don't even think it changed for you guys. But it, it just changes the vote from five-four to six-three realistically. And now is kinda when we're gonna start talking about the differences between all the stuff that you guys could do. So, zoning does lead to litigation. It happens not insignificant amount of times, especially when you have potentially controversial projects and property owners that don't like them. The one that we're first talking about here is challenges to zoning and rezoning. The zoning and rezoning in the state of Missouri is considered legislative. So when the council ultimately approves it, they approve it via ordinance. And the Missouri courts say that is legislative. What that means is the city council is given significant deference by the courts, because courts don't like stepping in to the legislative process. There's a reason why the city council is elected and a judge down in Harrisonville does not have the same responsiveness or responsibility to the citizens of Belton. So, since it is a legislative decision, it is presumed valid. Just starting from there, the burden of proof is on the person challenging the decision. And like we said, property owners are entitled to reasonable use of their property, that is to avoid that sort of taking. So if an existing zoning classification is R one on fifty-eight highway, we all know that's probably not a reasonable use of that property. Nobody, I know at least I wouldn't wanna live in a house on fifty-eight highway. When, the only time zoning decisions are overturned is when they are not reasonable and they are arbitrary and capricious. Meaning there was no basis for your decision. There was no, the comp plan didn't support it. Staff, you know, going through all of the criteria that the UDC sets out for rezonings, none of that supported the decision that was made. Um, and that's why, if you ever look at Matt's staff review or his staff report, they include each criteria that the planning commission and city council is can apply to that decision and then at, they analyze it. I have tons of cities where they just reprint that and leave it at that. If you look at Matt's staff reports and Jenna's staff reports, there is actually true analysis of those criteria for the planning commission and city council. At a minimum, the courts have said, a zoning decision has to be fairly debatable. Which, the way, the simplest way to think about it, tie goes to the city. So if a court's like, hey, this could go either way, they're not gonna overturn the decision. And one of the differences, and we'll get to this when we get to our administrative approvals, is on a zone, in a zoning case, it's not just the record that you guys create that the court is reviewing. All sorts of new evidence can be brought in. If, for example, uh, uh, the city's decision to either zone, rezone or not rezone property was ever challenged, Matt would be down there as a witness and would, you know, sorry, Matt, but it, you'd probably be a full day witness going through all sorts of different, you know, zo- re- zonings and rezonings that have happened in the city. The criteria for the city, Matt's expertise as a planner, all of this sort of stuff going through it, when, when we get to special use permits, w- Matt doesn't get a second bite at that apple. Um, special use permits are when the city council has determined that a use could be compatible in a zoning district, but they need to take a second look at it. So when you think about, that there are four categories of uses. Permitted by right, which means there's nothing that you gotta do. You just gotta kinda comply with some basic stuff. Permitted subject to conditions, which is you don't have to come in and get any additional approvals, but if you wanna do this use in this zoning district, you have to follow these rules. There are special use permits, which are, this use could work in this zoning district, but we need a second look at it and it needs to comply with all this stuff and you need to come in and you need to have a public hearing and they need to be before you guys and then ultimately go up to the city council. And then there is non-permitted, which is just, no, you can't do that. Absolutely not. Can't put industrial and R one. Absolutely not, can't put industrial and R-one. When it comes to. Special uses, and again, this is why I would always defer to Matt's staff report for a lot of this stuff. Special uses have specific criteria in applying it, just like a zoning or rezoning does, and Matt's staff report will go through. And I, I keep calling it Matt, when I say Matt, I mean Matt and his whole staff's, staff reports. Will go through the criteria, because there are some criteria for, there's general cri- criteria for special uses. But then there are some uses where it's the general criteria, and then there's even additional. Criteria that need to be considered for those specific uses, a lot of the things that you'll see. And again, there's some of the limited ones, but setbacks from schools, parks, and religious assemblies. Um, you know, maybe we don't want, a liquor store's fine in C-one. But there are some churches pretty close to C-one, so maybe we wanna take a second look at it and make sure that it's, has an additional approval. Uh, residential land, land uses, that's kinda the exact same thing. Setbacks from same similar land uses, this is for what I would sometimes call, uh. Non-preferred uses, but they still maybe have a constitutional right to them, uh, specifically like adult-based businesses. Adult-based businesses, there is a constitutional right to that, cause there's some First Amendment protection there. But what you'll see is a lot of cities don't want one area of town. To become, here's where we have a lot of those uses, instead. If we are gonna allow these uses like we have to, let's make sure that there's not one area where all of the uses and the detrimental effects of those uses are. Present, let's instead spread it out, so that those uses don't pile on to, or those secondary effects don't pile on top of each other. Hours of operation is another one that is typically brought up, and that is something if you also again, look at Matt's staff report. But you'll see that sometimes staff will say, here are additional conditions that we think are necessary. For this, or just the, like, actually implementing it, where it'll say, the hours of operation need to be set by the special use permit. Maybe in some locations, it's okay that the gas station operates twenty-four-seven. But in other locations, it doesn't make sense to have the gas station operate twenty-four-seven, so why don't we make it. Six to nine or something like that. Um, they, special use permits are not granted to a person. They are approving the use, somebody applies for it, but. That runs with the land, it continues to go, so our protection on that is a lot of the times you will see them have time limits. Where, in five years, we wanna come back and take a look and make sure we made the right decision. Special use permits can be revoked, those can sometimes get a little tricky. Um, does your U D C specifically lay out a re- a revocation process?
Yes, there's a process in the special use provisions for those.
Some cities don't have that, and it leads to a lot of questions of, okay, what do we do, and it's usually redo the same process that when we granted it. Um, and then the public hearing is required, we're gonna talk about that here in the. Nope, we'll, I'll just do it now, cause I think it's a later slide, but we're on a roll, but the public hearing is required. And like I said, that public hearing is not held in front of the city council additionally. If a special use permit denial or grant is challenged, unlike zonings, there is no new evidence. That review by the circuit court is based off of the record that was created here. And then our U D C and other stuff like that, so when it comes to special use permits, that's really when. The planning commission's ability to develop a record that supports its decision is really key. Subdivision regulations, uh, sorry, I didn't mention this, but special use permits are administrative, so we have our kind of two main, three main categories. Legislative, administrative, and then quasi-judicial. Quasi-judicial, that's B Z A more, here you guys are more administrative, there is. A subcategory for administrative, which is subdivision regulations, and that is ministerial. A plat is not something that approves a use, it is not something that. Says, yes, now this works, a plat is something that makes it so that somebody can sell lots. So that, and that the city can get the necessary easements for the roads and the public infrastructure. So, when we're, when you guys are considering plats, when plats get approved or denied and there's a legal challenge. All the courts are looking at is taking your subdivision regulations and what they say, taking the plat, going. Check the box, are all the boxes checked? Yes, okay, you have a ministerial duty to approve it. This kind of idea of the ministerial approval stems from a case called Furlong Companies versus City of Kansas City. And that was where the City of Kansas City denied a plat for a car wash, gas station, Burger King. And a Sonic, I can tell you the outcome of the case, because I have got gas at that gas station. I have washed my car at that car wash, I have eaten at that Burger King, and I have eaten at that Sonic, if you wanna go see it, it's on, uh, Minor and Holmes. It's on the north west quadrant. The City of Kansas City denied it, Furlong Companies challenged that, they brought what's called a nineteen eighty-three claim, which is under the Civil Rights Act. They won, they gotta build what they wanted to build, and because it was a nineteen eighty-three claim, they also got their attorney's fees paid for by the City of Kansas City. So the decision, for some reason, to not allow those uses. Cost the City of Kansas City, I think it was six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and that was in two thousand and six. So, when it comes to subdivision regulations, yes, they are administrative, but if they check all the boxes. If the setbacks are right, and the street widths are right, and the infrastructure is right, and all of that works. It is no longer, we're not, we're, we're not saying, no, you checked all of our boxes, there you go.
And that's, and that's why, at the last public hearing, when, when you guys made the recommendation to deny the rezoning, the development plan for. The apartment project, uh, we postponed the preliminary plat because there wasn't. Any rational reason to deny the preliminary plat because it did meet all of our subdivision regulations, so. Postponing that until a final decision was made by council made sense, and that way, if, if. It was approved, we would bring the preliminary plat back for approval of the planning commission, um, but since I was denied, essentially, it's just. Uh, a dead application.
And again, you guys aren't one of the, this city understands kind of the, the nature of plats, is so that. We can get our infrastructure and so that real estate agents can sell lots, because there is. A statute that prohibits the selling of property in the state of Missouri if it's smaller. Than I think a fourth of a quarter section of a township and range without a plat. So what the plat does is it just makes it realistically something that the real estate agents can now go and sell lots. When we're looking at our legal standards, like we, I kinda briefly started talking about. When it came to special use permits and zoning, zoning legislative, whole lot of deference. Administrative and quasi-judicial, that goes away. It is now based on competent and substantial evidence on the written record. So, we are no longer given some preferatory treatment, because the entire purpose of our administrative approvals is to. Property owner, if you wanna do this, here's what you need to hit, and then once they hit it, they. Receive some sort of knowledge that they can move forward with the use of their property. In the manner that the city council and the planning commission have already essentially determined is okay. So again, since we're just dealing with the record, Matt doesn't get a second bite at the apple at the testimony. And the planning commission doesn't get a second opportunity to come down and testify as to why they made their decision. So when it comes to those sorts of decisions, administrative things, that's when you're. Being vocal about why you're voting and a, applying that to the criteria that's stated in the staff report and in the U D C. Is important, because if nobody says anything, I'll lean on Matt's staff report and say, hey, that's why it happened. But there leaves an open question, if you instead state, yeah, I'm not gonna vote for this, because one of the criteria is traffic. The traffic study came back and said that maybe there did need to be some improvements, I'm gonna vote no because of that. Then that means that I don't, I don't, you know, I don't have to guess, the court doesn't have to guess, I, we, we can point to it. And say, no, your honor, they didn't deny this for some arbitrary reason, it was based on this competent and substantial evidence. That there was traffic issues, the planning commission member, Commissioner Ruggles specifically said. No, the traffic report shows that there needs to be additional improvements, I'm not going to vote. Yes on this for that reason, I'm gonna vote no. Variances, that's B Z A, again, a little bit different, but that is additionally an on-the-record review is what we call it. Um, and then another statement about subdivision plats, just like I said earlier. We're checking boxes on subdivision plats, we're not getting into a bunch of other things, that's why again. Matt and staff, when a subdivision plat is brought to you, there's usually already been other stuff done in that process. That does allow the city some wiggle room and criter- and, you know, different criterion standards. When it gets to that subdivision portion, everything else has usually already been met. Yeah, go sell your lots, Public Works can get the easements that they need and we'll move on. The next couple of slides are the main ones I want the planning commission to. Kind of, you know, when Matt sends us out, these are the ones to really continue to consider, cause again. The key is, for any decision, especially our administrative ones, is establishing that record. Um, again, the importance is, is, that is what, for administrative decisions, that is all we have when it goes down to the court. If there's no record at all, then we're just kinda S O L there. When it comes to. The re- the initial record, that is why Matt will kind of talk about exhibits that he's offering. Specifically stuff like his staff report, things like that, and that is why those then become part of the record. It also does provide a guide work for s- uh, framework for staff. If staff brings something and you all have issues with it, and specifically state those issues. Then the next time that sort of project comes into Matt or to staff, they know that you've had issues with. Something similar to this because of a certain reason, so they can let an applicant know, like, hey, Commissioner Ruggles has been really hard on traffic studies. We need a traffic study, you need to show that there's not gonna be any adverse traffic impact because of this project. When it comes to evidence presented, expert versus lay is something we'll talk about in a little bit. But if there is some sort of testimony that maybe you either believe is right. Or doubt it, state that as well, so, again, just giving you a couple of real easy ones. I find that hard to believe, if, and I'll, I'm just gonna keep hitting on traffic, cause it's an easy one. But if you have a traffic report in front of you that Public Works has approved and says no substantial impact, and then you have somebody that's opposed to the project coming in and saying. This project is going to cause so many traffic problems, and it's going to kill tra- it's going to. The roads are just gonna be packed, nobody's gonna be able to go anywhere, kids are gonna get hit by cars, whole nine. But you have a traffic study, you can say, you know, after all of that, and it gets to your guys' kind of time to talk. Like, hey, I, I can't get there on the traffic study, or on the, uh, that, that, that there's gonna be a negative traffic impact, we have a traffic study, the traffic study says it's good. I'm gonna kind of defer to that, everything else that I've heard presented, I, you know, isn't based on stuff like this, so I'm gonna lean here. The other one is when you, especially when you have experts, is during your Q and A portion, specifically to the experts. If you have an issue with something that they've say, said, try and draw some more out of it. Like if you think that something that they said is either close, or is. Again, maybe something that you're just kind of like, how, how did you get there? Ask them, be like, hey, could you please explain how you reached this conclusion on this criteria? Um, you guys can use your personal knowledge, if it is. An administrative one, please make sure to state that personal knowledge on the record. Because not only does that then give us the guide to, that was something that you thought of, but it also gives. Matt, it gives the applicant, it gives your other members of the planning commission the opportunity to kind of question that. So that, you know, it builds that even more. And also, when you say I have personal knowledge, don't just say, hey, I think, you know, I, I know that. Cars drive fast down that street, say, I know cars drive fast down that street, I live right over there. Or, I'll just use the apartment complex one. And my own personal usage of Eagles Landing Golf Course, but be like, you know, I know that cars drive fast down that street because I go, I drive there. Six times a week going to Eagles Landing to hit balls at lunch. But again, and it also gives other people the opportunity to raise additional questions about that. This is kinda laggy on me.
Go to the PDF there.
Kinda going, again, back to what we were talking about, but always ask questions. But ask them based on the relevant criteria and the evidence that's presented. At the beginning of this, when I said, if you don't have time, just read the staff report, that's why, is when we're making specifically administrative decisions. We're making them based on the criteria that our code says, we're not making them based on criteria that we've come up with in our head. So, ask questions from staff, the applicant, their engineer that's here. But then base those questions not on just some random thing in your head, base it on the criteria, base it on the evidence that's been submitted. What you should not do is ask questions or base your decision on unrelated criteria that has no point in what's going on. If, like for a special use permit, special uses have set criteria for the decision. The reason why they have that set criteria is because there was a text amendment, or the adoption of the U D C. That was first brought to the planning commission and then the city council that said, these are the relevant criteria. This is a tough one, this next one, and kinda brought it up when we went through those three things on like that third slide. But do not base your decision solely on either the amount or the testimony of the adjoining property owners. That testimony's great, and that can serve as part of your decision, but that testimony is not the public interest. The public interest is those three other criteria that we talked about, so. Yes, i- if somebody comes up and has a concern about a relevant criteria, that's great. And you can hit on that, you can utilize that, but don't state, hey, I'm gonna vote no. Um, because the neighboring property owner gave me a call, said he doesn't like the project. That's not relevant, and adjoining property owner is not the public, his ideas, their ideas are not the public interest. Don't base your decisions on personal preferences, this all kinda flows from, we keep it with our criteria, so I've. I have one city where, and this also is the second one, for some reason, every new. Commercial business that's come into town for the past like year has been a coffee shop. It, it is absurd, they have now, they had no coffee shops, now I think they have a Scooters. Uh, a Dunkin', a Dutch Brothers, a local one, all, all in the past year. And I've had council members be like, you know, I don't, I don't drink coffee, so I don't really care. Like, I don't care if we deny this, and it's like that, that has nothing to do with what we're talking about. The other one, base your decisions on regulating competition. Where I see this the most is when there's a local business that does the same thing that the new business is coming in. I don't, you guys don't have a local hardware store, do you? Yeah, but I've seen this one before, where the city has the local family-owned hardware store. And a Home Depot, a Lowe's, and Ace, a Sutherland's, something comes in, and you'll hear from the public. Why do we wanna approve this, it's gonna kill our, our local business. Well, unfortunately, zoning is not competition-based, it is based on. It is based on the criteria that we've talked about, compatible, compatibility of land uses, public interest, stuff like that. It is based on the, you know, the public good. It is not based on making sure that our locally-owned business has a leg up and can't get closed. I'm guessing, you know, if, if everybody was basing decisions on that, we'd have a lot more, we'd have a lot less McDonald's. You know, the, the Snack Shack would be the only place to get a burger in town. But that is not, that, that is not what we base our decisions on. So expert versus lay. This is when we're talking about the neighbor saying, I have a traffic concern, and the traffic engineer saying the traffic concern. Courts defer to the engineer. Expert testimony is given greater weight than lay testimony. When you are going to make your decision based on expert testimony that might be counter to what a layperson has said at a meeting, make sure to state that. Make sure to say, I think this person is credible. Here's their, you know, their CV was entered as an exhibit. This is the 900th traffic report that they've done. They've done these for us in the past, and I've seen them work. So I'm going to, you know, that testimony, that expert testimony is what I am basing my decision off of. And when that happens, and if that goes down to the circuit court, and I can point to it in my briefing, that the planning commission based their decision on the expert opinion from the traffic study, not just based on generalized, oh, we might have traffic problems here. We win. That, Lynette Realty versus City of Chesterfield. That was legitimately the entire decision. The city said they based it off of traffic. The opposing council brought in all of the city council members as witnesses, asked them all what, you know, what was your decision based off of? They all said traffic. He asked them, what, based on traffic? And they all were kind of like, oh, you know, just, we thought there'd be traffic. He's like, well, there was a traffic study submitted as part of this that specifically said that there was not going to be traffic concerns. Lynette Realty won that case too. Kind of going even more towards that, but the demonstration and the amount of weight given by decision makers. This is when you don't have to state why you're voting a certain way, but it helps. Especially in those administrative statements. Because those administrative decisions, special use permits, stuff like that, because that, when that decision is only based on the record, having what you, why you actually did it on the record means that the opposing party can't say, no, they didn't make it based on this relevant review criteria. They made it based on something else. It's like, no. Commissioner Shutt said, I'm making the decision based on this relevant criteria. That's what he made it on. When it comes to our legislative stuff, because we're given so much deference, so much deference, these sort of considerations are lessened. Obviously, it's still a good thing to do because, again, it gives Matt and his staff and future applicants kind of a framework. But it's not necessary. If, if Matt hands me the record and I go, oh my God, these minutes Madison did not put in, why somebody voted some way, the recording doesn't say it, we are screwed. But if it's legislative, we're, I got a little bit more leeway in there. The, the, this kind of stuff is much more something that Matt will do, the documents and the record. That's why the staff report and the ordinance that goes before the council, if it's a special use permit, will incorporate a lot of these ordinances, will reference them, will state them again, or will include them as an exhibit. One of the reasons for this is there's something called judicial notice. When you go down to the court, when I go down to the court and say it's a Missouri statute, I don't have to bring a certified copy of the statute. The judge can take judicial notice. Yes, that statute exists. I don't have to do anything else. For city ordinances, there is no judicial notice. So if it's an administrative review, we can't present new evidence. Matt's staff report, for some reason, didn't include the review criteria. All of a sudden, the court doesn't actually even know what it's supposed to be reviewing, and we automatically lose. There's not a land use case that talks specifically about this recently, but the, there was a, a case for a dangerous building where they went through the dangerous building process, which includes a hearing. The city did not introduce the dangerous building ordinance. When it went to the circuit court for review, the circuit court was like, I can't tell if this was, this, you know, the decision was right under your ordinance because I don't have the ordinance. City, you lose. This has to go back. Findings of fact. Matt, which does, does your code call out exactly which cases you guys do findings of fact in?
Believe it does state that we do it for special use permits and variances.
So variances, it's the most key. Conditional use permits, it's a little less. But findings of fact, the reason why we do them and why you might adopt them is because that adds even another layer to that record. Because now the planning commission has not only created that record, stated why they were going to vote the way they were, said this is the review criteria that I'm basing my decisions on. Now there's an even written record that you all have approved and signed that says, here are the relevant facts. Here are the facts applied to our relevant criteria, and here's the decision that we made. So that's the, that's the reason why sometimes we'll see, you'll see findings of fact. Specifically, the most, a lot of the times findings of fact aren't done. That's just the plain and simple of it because it's not that big of a situation. But if it is one where maybe we've gotten word from either opponents or supporters that, depending on the decision, there could be a lawsuit, you'll see findings of fact submitted to you all to approve. Ethical considerations. I know ex parte communications are always talked about. Ex parte communications are just communications outside the public hearing process, and these are, again, mainly for administrative decisions. Nobody can be expected to never have one. I'm just to be realistic. Like, there's no way that you could live your life in a city the size of Belton and not end up having ex parte communications of somebody that might be interested. If you have them, state them. State them on the record. Say, I was at the Price Chopper. I bumped into the applicant. He talked to me a little bit. Here's what the conversation was about. Here's what he said. Maybe there was even an email. If there was an email, tell Matt, hey, Matt, I got an email from the applicant saying X, Y, and Z. Make sure that's included on the record. When it comes to legislative decisions like zoning though, because again, we're given greater deference, it's not just based on the record, it's not as big of an issue. And in fact, people get paid millions and millions of dollars to do it because ex parte communication on legislative decisions is just called lobbying. That's all it is. So administrative decisions, if you've had ex parte communications, state them. State what they were, put it as part of the record because now, if you don't, then all of a sudden, there's a question of, did you make your decision not based on the record? Is there, was the decision made on stuff outside of the record? Can't make it outside of the record. Got to be what's on the record. So then we bring in an issue. So anytime you have them, avoid them the best you can. But nobody here is dumb enough to think that it might not happen. But if it does, just make sure that you know it's going to happen. There is an additional slide. I always remove it. But prejudgment bias, there is no reported case in the state of Missouri on it. Prejudgment bias is just you saying, yeah, I, I was never going to vote yes on a fast food restaurant. I don't like fast food restaurants. No matter what fast food restaurant comes in, I'm never going to vote yes. Don't say that. That is prejudgment bias. And while there's no Missouri case, I don't want to be the test case, and I don't think the taxpayers of the City of Belton want to be the test case for it either. Matt has included as part of this presentation, all of your guys' adopted codes. The City of Belton, more so than a lot of cities its size and bigger, is very open about what its policies are, what its code says, what its regulations are, what its public works construction plans are. So all, all developers know what these are. So when they come in here yelling about Ronnie Raines and his meter pits, just know they knew how deep the meter pits were supposed to be dug. And, and here's all of them right there so you guys can even look at them. But if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All right. Patrick, first want to just thank you for taking the time and always, always learn more things every time.
Well, I, I always love giving these presentations because you always see somebody learn something new. And then it's always, it's usually like one or two meetings afterwards, I'll hear about a planning commissioner like doing the exact thing that was said on the slide, and I'm always like, yes. If that person sues or somebody sues, we're good.
And I'd also be remiss if I didn't state that you're exactly right in what you said. The reports that we get, the agenda packets, everything is so detailed. It is, it makes this job easy because of how well staff puts that all together. So appreciate.
Yeah, I'll even, so for a lot of our clients, we review all of those land use staff reports. And a lot of the times, like, it basically borderline turns into my staff report as I'm revising it. I think the last like two times I've looked at one of Matt's staff reports, I've added like three words in total. Because it's like, I know, that already, that already did what I needed it to. I don't even know why I asked for this.
Are there any questions, comments? Raines all loaded up now with all kind of information to process. But really appreciate it. All right. Next item would be director's report. Matt?
Yeah, a few things. First, we, we've, I will get the May building permit report up on the website. Madison completed that yesterday. So there are a few things that were permitted last month that I wanted to highlight. First of all, the Olive Garden was officially permitted, both the site work and the building. They have started some dirt movement out there. And then we also permitted a tenant finish for the Peanut Restaurant that will be going in the former Brew Baker space in Cedar Tree. We also updated the online current projects map. So there's a few other projects that are currently in the permit review. The Valvoline project is in permit review. Hyperenergy Bar behind McAllister's, which the final development, the final development plan was approved, I believe, back in January by the commission. That's in permit review. And then the tenant finish for Handel's Homemade Ice Cream. They will be going in next to McAllister's in that empty tenant space. So I believe that their permit is actually approved. We're just waiting on their final contractor. So we are hoping to get that issued here in the next week or two for a, a new ice cream shop. And then we will have meeting dates on Tuesday, June 17th is our next planning commission meeting. We have a, we will have a public hearing for rezoning and a special use permit for KC Compost, which is the compost facility out on West North Avenue, 58 Highway, just past Prospect over the railroad bridge. That will be a 20-acre expansion to the north of their facility. And then we also have some UDC text amendments related to residential driveways. And then we've also received an application for Tuesday, July 1st for a utility easement vacation that impacts some lots on Autumn Ridge, Fourth and Fifth Plats. So that will also be a public hearing. So please get those meeting dates on your calendar so we can make sure we have a quorum for those public hearing items to keep those projects moving forward. And then just a reminder, I sent out an invite last week for the UDC kickoff meeting with our multi-studio consulting team. That'll be this Thursday at four o'clock here in the council chambers. And that's it.
Keeping us busy. All right. Any other items? All those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye? Any opposed?